This conference will now be recorded.
All right, so we will call to meeting, call to order the Select Board on March 12th at 5:31 PM. We have all three members of the board present here in Town Hall and we also have the Town Clerk present. Thank you, Chris, for joining us.
You're welcome.
The first item of business is signing loan documents for the $129,000 for the new medical rescue vehicle that was approved at Town Meeting. There's not much more to say about it unless there's any questions. This was approved at Town Meeting and it's nearing delivery, I believe, because that's usually when we sign these things.
My only question is, you were just discussing doing a down payment against the loan at ATM. If it's being delivered now...
To where? We can't.
So we can't?
We didn't have the money.
Right, so basically we should, we'll have to alter the budget because as I understand, you can't do early payments.
Yeah, so it will come due on October 30th.
Oh, so we can still do it?
So on October 30th, we'll...
Okay, when we renew it.
We'll pay, yeah. This came up last time we received the vehicle and we had approved the monies at Town Meeting, but they weren't available yet.
Right.
So we will hopefully make a down payment on October 30th.
Right.
And, yeah, but good question. Any other questions?
No.
All right, so what we're gonna need to do now is there's a lot of signatures and then Chris has to seal it. It's 4.9%. And then this stuff is just for internal use for the treasurer, so we don't have to do that.
Are we signing all the yellows?
Yeah, I think there's five on it.
It says clerk, and it says... Okay, you missed one.
Okay.
I was just kidding, I think that's chomping under.
Oh. Yeah, I think what she, what we've been doing is if we get, depending on whether we get delivery, we take a shorter note. So that we can...
That totally makes sense, and I remember that from last year. You missed one more. Again, chomping under. It's a lot of signatures.
I'll double check when I see one of those.
Yeah.
H on page.
Thank you.
Sure.
Go on, that one's clerk. Okay, so it's all the yellows, Celia Frank. Check both sides. If you go through the yellows, the greens, which are slightly different color.
True, anytime.
That's bad when they're like that. I know, it's really helpful to have very different color. It's really tricky too, if you're trying to use like colored backgrounds on, on one of the word processors or Excel. Because it's great on the screen, but then when you go to print them... Click that, yeah. Especially if you're printing black and white, but even in color sometimes it works on the screen, but not on... Blue?
I'm ready.
You're ready, Nigel? I kinda did, but I wasn't certain.
We're just signing off the loans for the medical rescue vehicle that was approved at Town Meeting, so.
2020.
It's nearing arrival.
How did the winds treat you the last couple of days? Yeah!
Yeah, so this goes to Chris. And then Chris, whenever you want to pop back, you have five or 10 minutes?
Sure.
Or do you want to handle that right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to do that?
Yeah, yeah.
And I can just drop this whenever it's done?
Yeah.
If you want, you want to pull up the chair or sit down, put it over there, wherever's comfortable. So Chris just has some updates from the Town Clerk.
Yeah, I just really wanted to give everybody an overview of where we're at with the office post-election. Election went really well, it was turnout of right around 200 voters. It's been certified with the state. There's still a couple remaining loose ends with the town committee. I have to do a certification process that is separate from the state for that and update my voter list. But everything went really well. New election workers worked out smoothly, the counting went smoothly. There is a backlog of regular clerk's office items that has accumulated though because there was so much effort and time put into the election. So first off, I would like to start doing an extra five hour shift a week. So that would be a total of 15 office hours per week for the rest of the month of March. Just to clear the backlog of work, we're going into town caucuses and then we'll be going into annual Town Meeting and our local election as well. I don't want to be behind whenever we're gearing up for that. I want to assess also my pool of extra hours, see where, how much of that I've used. And look at the rest of the year because it's a very busy year for elections and for the clerk's office in general. To see if we might need to add even more extra hours. I would like to do that at the annual Town Meeting. So that if we get to near the November election and it doesn't look like we have enough, I don't want to have to call a special Town Meeting just for something like that. So I really just wanted to let you guys know how busy things are in Town Clerk's office right now.
And it just, as you know, when you put them forward, it's important to make sure you differentiate if it's clerk hours or election. I mean, I know it's both clerk.
Yep.
It's kind of considered separate poles of minds.
Yep. Did you guys have any questions about where I'm at with my office?
My initial thought would just be, it makes 100% sense, take, use the extra hours. I think we had said, what is 100 per year?
That's correct.
If you can take the next couple of weeks, if you could tell us by April 1st, if possible, about any changes to the budget for next year. That would be fine by me because you're new to the office and you're learning. We were asking for budgets, you know, back in December, January, but obviously it's your first time running the show.
That's not a problem, get it added to you by April. Also, next year's gonna be another can of worms. It's not gonna be as bad because there aren't state and federal elections. So I wouldn't expect the workload to be as intense next year as it is right now. It's kind of like that, that four and two year cycle where things get a little crazy.
But starting in July...
Sure, the difference in the calendar year with the fiscal year.
So starting in July is what we're budgeting and there will be the, I think, the primary and presidential rate.
Yes.
So...
September and November.
We just have the primary.
No, it's a state.
Oh, state primary?
It's a state.
Okay, sorry, it was the presidential primary, sorry, okay.
So let's, you know, stay in touch. I, I'm not, you know, it's good that you're identifying these things early. And in April, you know, if you could tell us by April 1st, if you have a sense of your July 1st to June 30th budget, if you need an extra 50 hours for election. Because an election day alone is 12 hours, 14 hours, right?
I will see a total of about 15 hours for election day.
So that's 15 hours right there.
Yep.
So if you have a sense, okay, instead of budgeting 100 extra hours, we need 150, you know, just let us know. It's a tight budget year, but this is something that needs to be done.
It's crucial function, we can't...
Speaking of crucial function for the future of the office too, I would, I think it would be wise, and I'm always having my ear to the ground and looking out for somebody that would be an assistant Town Clerk who could be there learning things and helping out. It's not absolutely necessary at this point as much as I think it's just a good idea.
Yeah, and so I know there's a few people who will help you out and it sounds like none of them really want to be the assistant Town Clerk.
Not to the best of my knowledge, no. I haven't outright asked anybody, but certainly nobody has come to me with that.
Yeah, and I get the sense that maybe it is. So at some point, moving forward, if you say, we want to post it, we want to budget for it, let's do it.
Okay.
I don't know how much of a budget at all we have, do we have a budget for it at all?
I don't think so.
I believe in the past.
Oh, we have had that.
We did, but I don't even turn.
Well, I believe what happened in the past when Gary was Assistant Town Clerk, his hours came, as Assistant Town Clerk came out of that 100-hour pool. I'm not certain about that, but I think that's the way it worked.
And he technically wasn't an Assistant Town Clerk, he was just a staff.
Yeah.
So there were, and actually I think it may be even a deeper history where I think he may have been Assistant Town Clerk. So, you know, talk to your other Town Clerk, I think that may be one thing that's helpful, is like you go to the conference, talk to other Town Clerks, what are they doing, you know, in a similar size? I don't know if there's a Town Clerk listed.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, so it'd be good, you know, let's get you whatever help and hours you need and I think we pared it down maybe a bit much, you know, when we hired you.
Particularly in light of this particular year.
Yeah, and the elections are always, but that is gonna happen every two and four years.
Four years, yeah.
So let's figure out what you need and I think because it's your first time, I would entertain something by April 1st. If you say, you know, we need an extra 3,000 or some amount, if you can kind of show why.
Sure.
I know it's a little bit later than we asked from the other departments, but it's your first time going through elections on your own.
You know, I think I'd be able to give you a real good idea of the workload and what I could predict would be any necessary addition to extra hours to get us through the rest of this calendar year.
Yeah.
Including next fiscal year.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah.
That's pretty much it from my end with the clerk's office, so if anybody else have any other questions?
I had one other thought, which is that if you want to use some of those extra hours each week and not post them as office hours and you feel like they'd be more productive and you keep your regular office hours, I would be comfortable with you just working an extra three hours.
Sure. Having my hours posted as open office hours doesn't really impact very much me, my getting, my ability to get stuff done.
Okay.
If somebody needs to come in and, you know, pick up five, 10 minutes of my time, then that's okay. And if it's something that's really labor intensive, I'll ask that they make a, you know, an appointment and come back later if it's not an emergency. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
I'll get these looked over, sign them, seal them, and bring them back in.
Yeah.
So if there's any other questions or anything, whenever I come back in, just wait.
Thank you.
Yep.
Were you here for a particular side?
Actually, no, I was pulling traffic behind, you're having a meeting, so that would be my civic duty.
Always welcome, we just jumped to the potentially erroneous conclusion that you might have it.
No.
No, I know.
You're, you're always welcome. If, we just like to accommodate, if someone's here for, to talk about the library loan, we'll jump ahead to the library loan. Let's, let's get back to it. So the earth removal permit, I don't have, I think we're gonna table that until next meeting. Are the, Frank, do you want to jump into fire company lease?
Yeah, the, I forwarded the... Kevin West has been doing the contract negotiations with the fire, with the fire company. And I forwarded you got, Kevin sent it to everybody, then I forwarded it to the, to the finance. No, I didn't, the finance. And basically, I don't know if you want to call it an in-pass report, or how you want. That's got to be done. So what I did was I broke down, you know, we're at this, here's... You know, we want to help, the fire company needs help. They have manning shortage and they have building issues based on the age. And I personally don't think donations would be able to fix all the problems, you know, that's a personal opinion there. What we've been doing, we originally went in, yeah, I deal to do a five-year contract. We got sidetracked for several different reasons. You know, Kevin's been out because of a family emergency, so we lost weeks in negotiation. What I, the pager that you have in front of me, what I proposed is we do a one-year lease. We take and we, we take the money that has been set aside in warrants and we have the wording changed on the warrants so they would be used for lease slash improvements to the building. That's the suggestion from the lawyer because you know that's part of the lease improvement. You set up a very simple system to reimburse the fire company when, you know, when an invoice is coming due or something.
You might want to change it to invoice coming due rather than nearing completion. Because there can be a lot of intermediate bills between start and completion.
I can change that, so we would do that and we draw down, you know, the fire company had told me that the $90,000 in the warrants would meet their needs for next year. They didn't need more dollars at that time. Then we would have a fall meeting, but then we would get this contract down, they would know how they could access $90,000 in the next year. We would have a long, have meetings with them to understand their long-term strategy for capital needs. And then negotiate a long-term lease and really make it a partnership where there's transparency. They have a lot of needs, I can't tell you the timing of all of them. And then, you know, there's only so much work they can get done in a year because they've still got to keep the building running. But have a strategy with them, you know, we've talked about building the partnership. The number, I didn't put in there, you know, the one-year lease, what the dollar amount was gonna be. We've talked about a lot. Last, when we started the meetings, we had, we were at the number of $82,000, which they had, they had a spreadsheet showing this is what, you know. They didn't have actual data, but this was their best estimate, what they would need per year. There would be like $8,200 in for an audit, there would be in a money, something there to do bookwork. IT stuff would get upgraded, they needed some tools to do things to the building, so forth. Now, they've come back and what they've done is they've asked the proposal, currently we pay $1,417 a month and it would be, that's $17,000 annually. They've asked for, in the first year of a contract, with two years of options, that's 63,600. The second year would be 111,000, it would go up 300. The third year would be 149,960.
And do I understand correctly that those numbers would, in their mechanism is to include the capital improvement monies right into that lease?
Well, I take it that's, you know, that's what Kevin, the leftover for running the building would be used for capital and they would say what their projects are and so forth and like that.
Just wanted that.
No, no, that's clear. So, you know, the question that has come up is that, I was hoping someone from the fire company would be here. But, you know, this is a quote from our house of the town council. "The safer course for the town, as we have discussed, while you could have a capital improvement plan going out several years, each year the lease would have a component to address the capital work plan for that fiscal year that the Town Meeting would approve as part of the appropriation for the lease." That's, that's, you know, that's not me, that's what the legal counsel is. So, you know, from my perspective, it's, you know, it's the mechanism for getting the money to do the work. They need help, you know, it's been educational and informative and the question is, how do we do it? You know, historically, the way I understand it, you know, the town votes $100, you know. And, you know, what I told them a week ago in a meeting, lease payments and capital payments, in my opinion, shouldn't be mixed. They should be, they should be separate. I can understand them wanting a simple mechanism for getting the check and not being the burden. It would be done outside the lease agreement. We would have a one-page amendment, this is the work they're working on, here's when I need the payment, here's the cash. And then we would have the town administrator update, here's the warrant. The check would be written out of the warrant to the MS Monterey Fire Company and then they would be responsible paying.
You mean like the, the bi-weekly warrants, not the Town Meeting warrant?
Well, what I was gonna get when we get into the town warrants is we change the wording of it. Chris said he could give us the wording of it, so it would be something, you want the word lease improvement because it would be part of the lease agreement that how that money would be spent. He didn't give me a specific. So I'm not, you know, I don't...
We might also want to throw in there, and, because I think you pretty much covered it, but I know that because of historical concerns about turnover on the boards, we might want to have some kind of language actually in the lease concerning that agenda, like I'm Emily.
Well, what I did in my prior life in cabin, when we were in the smaller group, when it was Roger, Dell, Kevin and I, we had a cover letter. I typically, you know, because it's hard, when you get into some contract, it's very hard to like have every specific. We used to do this in buying equipment. And that you talk about, it's a partnership, that the need, this is the need, this is just the first step in helping them improve, you know, make, it's a public safety issue. So it's the first step in doing that. It's not the last step, this is not the end, this is the beginning of it. And there, you know, that's how you see what Kevin talked about, we got into the conversation in the fall meeting, you know, that they would have... You know, when we talked about the lease agreement, we also talked about, we didn't want to make it such a tight budget on them, they couldn't get done on things that they need to get done. You know, oh, you know, something broke down here, so I got some money over here, I can't go up and just this issue. We talked about that and the ideal was that they would show the transparency. Maybe in the second year of the lease, it wouldn't be the same thing because we, you know, you go out and buy, fix something or you do something, you're not looking to repeat that kind of expense again. So, you know, I can, I can modify this, I can reach out to Sean and Dell and Kevin and Cludham and everything. You know, I don't, you know, I'm not sure what to say right now, you know, because there's been a lot of different numbers about with the lease payment. It's been as high as 82,000, it's been 50,000, they proposed 63,600. So I'm not sure if that includes an audit because, you know, some of them, as a part of transparency, they thought the audit should be there. You know, Sean wasn't sure, you know, he didn't, he wasn't sure if they needed an audit, needed help with bookkeeping, stuff like that. So I'm not sure with this, you know, I did have, Kevin called me before, he sent it out, you know, he's rushing out the door to go back home. I don't know what's in this stuff with this 63,600. That's where we stand at the time.
Hopefully we can, I mean, I think it's really good to have those side by side, like have it written down.
I could, I could do this and I could get it so we compare. I understand their concern because my personal opinion is they're overstretched, you know. Right now, the four leaders, you know, the, I don't know, you know, the chief and, you know, his brother and your dad and Dell, they're really dependent on the day they're responding, but they're also managing the firehouse and it's a lot of work. They're putting in a lot of time and they need help. I don't, I don't dispute that at all, you know. I'm not saying it's at a crisis level, but I mean, there's a lot of different things and then you have a cloud of district fire hanging over your head and then you mutual aid things, you know, so it's... And there really, a lot of the recruits are not coming from Monterey, you know, coming from San Antonio, Houston, Tonic. And that poses a whole new set of problems, you know, these gathered fire, you're coming a farther, further distance. So, you know, I do get a, I clean this up a little bit and see if I can get, you know, some kind of good with Sean, I don't, you know.
Can I wrap it up?
That's right, but that's...
Do we, um, do we have any sense of, like, what kind of timeline do we need this done by? Like, I guess in the end, well, even if we just have a number that we're mending on the budget at Town Meeting.
Well, I felt like we had to come through a lease payment, it's gonna take a month. You know, Kevin's aware, I'm gonna wait till March 31st. And, you know, they just move slow, they don't either. But we're somewhere along the line, we're gonna have to put a placeholder, we won't have a lease agreement. We may have, we may, I would hope by the Town Meeting, we have a tentative agreement, you know, this is what's gonna be in the lease and what's not, it might not be signed, you know.
But at least we might have a number to be able to...
We, we, we need to, we're gonna have to put a placeholder in there.
Well, as far as regular meetings, just to throw it out there, the last regular Select Board meeting to legally sign the Town Meeting warrant would be April 23rd. Preferably, we'd be signing at April 16th, or if we're really on top of our stuff, April 9th.
Okay, so we'll...
So those are the three regular dates, we can call a meeting whenever we want. But I would assume, you know, if we shoot for the 16th, the 23rd is late and the 9th is like, wow.
That would be awesome, but yeah.
We're good. I know my marks. You know, I, I'll get...
And just for clarity, the 9th is four weeks, okay? Like, because it's hard to keep that right, you know, with a one, two, yeah, the 9th is four weeks, the 16th would be five weeks. I'm like, I'm being scrolled at April 11th, I'm like, thanks for that.
Okay, let me know if we're all set or we want to...
I think you, I hope I answered your question.
You answered all my questions, it makes me, like, I just think that getting it down in writing so that the two things are both there, so that everybody's talking about the same plan is a good first step. Or a second step, or whatever you want to call it.
Peter Marquette told me that Roger McDonald is, interested me in the Renewable Energy Working Group. The appointments were setting to June 30th and I would assume we'd go to June 30th, 2025.
So, okay, this is a weird question, issue for us, but is there any conflict, like, if a resident is also the TA, can they wear both those hats? Now, of course, a TA could serve on a working group as TA, right? But then if we do that, are we formally appointing them? Are we appointing them as a TA or just, like, I don't know if it changes anything?
I don't think there's a problem. I do think that it's important to consult ethics as far as finance and town administrator. And I don't know there's gonna be a black and white answer, but there may be. This I do not think is a problem because town administrators often serve on advisory committees. And Renewable Energy Working Group is just that, right, their recommendation ad hoc, their innovation group. So I don't think that's a problem, but you always run it by state ethics. Particularly, you know, if you call them on the phone, sometimes it's black and white and sometimes if it's hairy, you send them a letter in writing, no response in writing. But I, no, I don't foresee this as a, as an issue.
I don't foresee it either, but I thought I wanted to raise it to...
To the point. Yeah, Roger.
I was just hedging my bets, you never know. He asked if I was interested, I said yes and it, that was before.
Yeah.
All the, all this stuff, so here I am.
Okay. And I think that we had been trying to do five and I think they were down to four, so this will round it out.
I may actually be losing one, I'm actually losing one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, forgetting who it was, but he, I think he's, he's leaving at the end.
End of the term at the end of June?
Yeah, I think I can't, I forgot his name, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I'll move it, we appoint Roger McDonald to the Renewable Energy Working Group for a term of two years?
To June 30th.
June 30th.
2025.
2025.
I second the motion.
All right.
A little discussion.
Is there any other discussion or comment?
Thank you.
We'll vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, that's the unanimous approval of the appointment of Roger McDonald to the Renewable Energy Working... And yes, so that's the unanimous approval of the appointment of Roger McDonald to the Renewable Energy Working Group through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The next item of business is town administrator position updates. So I posted this agenda on Friday. And since then, there's been some development. There's a couple items that we should discuss at this meeting. I think one is regarding the contract that we're negotiating, preparing to offer. I would propose that we save that discussion for executive session at the end of the meeting. Then, filling the immediate need of the town administrator office and how we can do that. And I've checked in with town council about that. So I have something to say about that. And then also.
Is that for now or for executive session?
No, for now.
Okay.
Um, but also for now, is kind of the town should respond to the letter that we received on Saturday from the previous town administrator. So the, I think kind of what's just important to note is, you know, it's kind of important to be precise about what occurred, just to ensure that we're following the proper procedure and law. Uh, you know, if there's wording changes, so I, I draft a letter, I set it out for, you know, a little bit.
See anything in that? I have issues in your letter.
You didn't have any issues?
I didn't have, I hope not.
Okay, so.
After the.
Uh, I didn't bring it up, use it, well, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so she said it, she said it was.
I saw, I said, I didn't have an issue.
Um, the gist of the letter is just thanking, you know, Melissa for her many, you know, many years of service to the town, wishing her well in future endeavors. We received the email. But the town, you know, interprets the email as a letter of resignation and did not terminate her employment. And then clarifying and ensuring that we are going to make sure that she receives compensation that she's due and legally entitled to, and keeping her on that health insurance policy. And that is the gist of it, and it's pretty short. But it's kind of important to clarify what did occur last week. Because we get, have to do things legal and follow the proper process. If there's no questions about it.
Were you running this by town council or?
I did.
You did?
I did.
So they were okay with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I did, uh, because I was concerned about.
You really know because we get one.
Yeah.
That's fine if they're, I'm comfortable with it if they're comfortable with it.
So, what? I, I thought there'd be changes, so I didn't print it out, but I will print it out and get signatures. And I'm also going to touch base with Sarah to make sure that, you know, the final check is delivered a hundred percent. Uh, because that's what, you know, we should do.
That's right, that's what we're.
As well as what we're legally required to do.
Um, so I, I'm gonna, I have a couple of follow-up questions, but maybe we're already gonna go some like, um, guide keys, but what about passwords?
Um, I don't have any progress on that.
Wouldn't we need to reach out to her to get them, or are we gonna try to go through the IT person?
Yeah, no, I can work on it. Um, there is, yeah, there's, like you mentioned, there's a couple, there's a couple ways to do it. One is kind of just brute force with the IT, which I don't know how much of an IT we have at this.
Yeah, but I think there, there's not only the computer, but then she has a password to get on the red page.
Oh, yeah, there's lots of, there's more than one password.
System, you know.
There's a lot.
She does stuff with the panel people.
So what I, what I can do is, I don't wanna do anything out of line. Uh, I can just tell town council that we're looking for passwords, um, cell phone if we don't have it.
You don't have a cell phone?
Not that I know of, but it may well be. I, I don't wanna make any statements.
We don't know.
I just, I'm not frankly aware.
Okay.
Uh, I don't wanna say that we don't have it. The town may well have it. Um, that being said, I just wanna proceed, you know, in a positive and legal way. So I will retype town council to make sure that that's done. I think it's, it's related to this, but it's somewhat separate because we just need to do the things listed here regardless. So we'll do that.
I, I'm gonna.
For the best.
So I think that part of the issue I'm having with, like, we didn't really make a transition plan because we felt uncertain of a bunch of things.
Yeah.
But the result of that is I'm concerned about balls that will be dropped between now and when we sort things out.
Yeah.
And if we can't wait each time for the next select board meeting, because we can guarantee balls will drop if we go through that process. So either we have to start having a lot of emergency sessions, or we have to, somebody has to be the front person and we have to delegate them to cope with all these issues as they arise. Because I don't think it's just gonna be passwords and balls, right? I think we have to consider that payroll is coming due.
So.
Invoices that need to be entered, that we have to figure out how that has to happen and who's gonna do it.
So there's a couple things going on. I have an email out to Sarah about payroll. Um, payroll needs to get paid next Thursday, the twenty-first. So I'm gonna work with Sarah on that. I kind of preempted a little bit of this. And.
Good, thank you.
What about invoices?
So invoices, I can't recall exactly what schedule we're on. But one of the first things that I'm hoping that Roger can do, and I'm hoping that we can come out of this meeting where he can start to put in some hours, is touching base with each department and making sure that they have the assistance they need to do invoices. Um, I know, you know, some departments are more self-sufficient and some, you know, the town administrator has been helpful.
Yeah, and my understanding is she was putting the fire company in the department of works.
Yeah, and to, to very degrees, I know she was definitely a reader. Uh, and many heads. I mean, there's background noise, so if you could please mute yourself, thank you. So one of the things I am hoping to come out of this meeting with is kind of getting Roger in the, in the office as soon as possible. It was a little bit unpredictable, uh, but like I said, I, you know, I'm already have a, been working with Sarah a little bit on the loan documents and, and making sure that absolutely payroll gets done right. Um, and then that bills get paid. And.
Do we, um, I know that I, so I, I reached out to Mary to find out about process and got a bounce back that she's out till the eighteenth.
I, I thought there was.
So I'm wondering if we have an alternate contact that, in the background check.
Yes, so I called, um.
You said you left messages, but it's.
So I called Mary, um, Michael Hale, who we worked with, and the main comments in our office.
Yep.
We're working on it. Town council is aware of the situation and, and we're working on it expeditiously. And tomorrow's gonna be hopefully a big day for, you know, I, frankly, when I got the vacation responder, because I hadn't heard anything about it, I assumed, some people go on vacation, but they kind of checked their email out. And I kind of assumed it was one of those vacations. And it doesn't seem like it's one of those vacations. So it's a little bit unfortunate. And Donna's out, Donna's gonna hopefully be back by the twentieth. But, um, I think what's gonna happen over the next couple of weeks here, you said, you know, is there someone delegate? Well, I think because Frank said I'm kind of a little bit, because you're out of town a little bit, you know, and because I'm the chair, let's just say I'm gonna be on top of it. And if anyone thinks of anything, you know, just let Roger know. But for the most part, I think that, you know, it's a transition, so it's not going to be a hundred percent smooth. But let's make it as, as best as we possibly, make sure the employees and department heads are getting any support that they need for day-to-day function. Let's make sure payroll is a hundred percent.
Please to throw in, which is that Seth from DRPC and I had a couple minutes before the meeting, so we were just the two of us. And he, he had heard about this and he wanted to throw out that, um, they do have some contacts of sort of retired people that might be willing to step in to sort of be a, to assist in the transition because they have TA experience.
Yes.
Um, I, you know, not as a per, not as a permanent thing. But just as a, like, getting, helping the new person to get up to speed or to fill the gap in.
Yes.
And there, we had that email from Nancy this afternoon.
Yeah, the Nancy Cleveland one, did you see that?
Yes.
So, I mean, there are some hours, we have hours, but we never.
Because we have the secretary hours, yeah.
That, you know, if we could do it. I think it'd be important, you know, suppose we just, you know, a few hours every day that you could say someone's here or someone wants to come in and ask a question. She can get the question and pour the, do whatever, you know, here's the contact list. So there is that kind of contact with, you know.
So the question is, do, do we wanna go ahead and do either of those things? Do we wanna try to create Nancy in place and/or do we wanna reach out to Seth and see if there's anybody that might be willing to? Oh, reach out to Seth.
Well, you know, reach out to Nancy or I don't know.
Well, I know Nancy.
Okay.
I think because, just because different people are leaving for different periods of time, why don't I just, you know, take point on this, just so that there's no confusion.
Yeah.
Um, and that we don't need to communicate outside of a meeting. Um, we may, the plan is, based on our planned meetings, is to go a couple of weeks without a meeting. So hopefully at this meeting, we can kind of set in place, um, the pieces. If, I forget, I think Nancy's on the call. Nancy, were you suggesting to work or to volunteer or be on the tax abatement program? Did you have a idea? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Is that it?
Is she in?
Yeah, we, we can't hear you, Nancy. It may also not be her, I don't know for sure, the initials match, but, um, let's, um, so just to wrap up the letter, after everyone's on the board, if everyone agrees to the letter, we're gonna sign the letter. I'm gonna make sure it gets sent, I'm gonna make sure Sarah, you know, pays out as, as is appropriate and required by law. That's done. As far as other transition things, I'm gonna take point, I'm gonna get as much as we don't have, may or may not have, we're gonna make an attempt for password, keys, cell phone. Nancy, it looks like you're, you're back. I'm not sure if you can speak now. But we can see you.
Phone number for him?
Yeah.
Because that seems to sometimes work in the other options. Nancy was probably on a move on a Thursday, because I was told to, for twenty-nine. It, it may not, so like I'm here, like, just, it is, I mean, she could be done.
It's just that for some.
That's wrong.
Yeah, I only think it's kind of important because everybody can get things set. Hi, Nancy. Gotcha. Is, is it okay if I put you on speakerphone with the board? All right, and I think if you can, please mute your system so there's no feedback.
Is it okay if I just go in another room?
Yes.
It doesn't seem to be feeding back, possibly why we couldn't hear you before.
Okay, good, I'm ready.
So Nancy, thank you for your generous offer. Were you, were you, uh, I just wanna clarify, were you talking about filling the position of office assistant as an employee or as a volunteer or as a tax abatement?
Well, any of those would work for me. I mean, it kind of, I guess partly depends on the job description.
Yeah.
But I think I'm going to do any of those three arrangements.
Okay. Well, we're all kind of, uh, just game planning the transition. And I think that we really appreciate your offer. And we just don't know exactly, you know, what the job description will be. Because of, because of kind of, we're just working, we're just playing it by ear to some degree. So, that being said, I think that your hours may be very helpful if you're willing to do it. As an employee, I don't know, we have a job description queued up a hundred percent. We had an office assistant job description and a select board secretary job description. But those may be complicated by the fact that to some degree, uh, we might be looking for other administrative help. You, you mentioned a number of things that you're capable of doing, and based on your resume, it's clear you have a lot of skills. It just, I see it, I see the best scenario being one where there's some fluidity and flexibility as to what kind of you have skills in and are, you know, would be most helpful. But the downside of that is not having everything squared away and a clear job description. That being said, would you be willing to do it on a volunteer tax abatement process to begin with? Just because we don't have that certainty?
Absolutely, uh, yeah, and I didn't actually mean a formal job description. I, I wanted to know, what, what would you, you know, what would be helpful for me to do? But I'm willing to start as a volunteer, absolutely. And when I say start, I'm, you know, assuming this is just gonna be for a few weeks.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm, I'm available immediately except for a couple of appointments next week. Um, I can, I can start any day.
Well, what if we, what if we, just given the time constraints and the fluidity and flexibility of what the needs may be of the town, what if we start as a volunteer and then reassess after a few weeks and see how things are going?
Sure.
Okay.
At which point hopefully we'll have a clearer idea of what, what we actually need. And it may not be the same thing ultimately as it will be right now.
Yeah. So, and again, thank you very much for your generous offer.
You're welcome. And, and let me just, um, add in that I have to announce the payrolls. I might be able to help payrolls and invoices if there's a, you know, a clear procedure.
Yeah, yeah, um, we are, you know, gonna figure out, payroll, I think, will hopefully really be squared away with the treasurer. As far as invoicing, we're gonna, you know, see where the needs are and, and where we could use the help depending department by department and employee by employee, you know, just seeing where the needs are. So what if we, what if we ma, what if we move to, to appoint you as a volunteer office assistant for, for two months to start?
Oh, I wasn't, I, I wasn't thinking that long.
Okay, so one month?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, to make it formal, I'll, I'll move that we appoint Nancy Cleveland as a volunteer office assistant for a period of one month. Is there any other discussion or comments? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
And thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
And thank you enough.
Oh, you're welcome, yeah.
Thank you very much, Nancy.
Okay.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
So, one last thing on my agenda as far as town administrator updates is, last week, we voted to appoint Roger McDonald as the town administrator pending, uh, background checks and contract negotiations. We're putting together a contract, but we all know that may take a few days or weeks. Um, and hopefully, I think what we're gonna offer is very reasonable. So I don't think it's gonna take very long. But to get you in the office sooner, one way to do that would be to just start on hourly rate, if you are up for that.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Um, another thing that I would do here.
Would we, would the clock start ticking for the contractual probation period, probationary period from now?
I think that whatever the contract terms and agreements come to is, is separate from what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Unless we incorporate it into. Unless we incorporate it into contract. But another thing that I would probably do is set a timeframe on this appointment, just so that we all know, we're all on the same page, it's, it's a.
Doesn't drag out.
Doesn't drag out. Uh, I would recommend forty-five days. I think that's plenty of time.
Man, I hope we can finalize it before then.
But, but, um, I, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, it's, it's done a lot sooner, but I think that way, we're all on the same page. Um, I would also recommend an hourly rate of thirty an hour, which is, which is just about, you know, the rate at forty hours a week, the annual rate. You know, that we have a budget for. And.
I trust your calculation.
Yeah. So.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So I would move to appoint Roger McDonald as town administrator immediately and until agreement is reached on an employment contract. Or for a term of forty-five days, whichever comes first, at a pay rate of thirty-eight dollars per hour for up to forty hours per week. With all the regular benefits offered to full-time employees in the town of Monterey, according to the town's employee handbook.
I'll second.
Second from Susan, is there any other discussion or comments? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval. Thank you Roger for, you know, stepping right into it. I think, I know that you unfortunately have a couple of days here, uh, where you're not available, but, you know, at least this allows us to get the. Get the ball rolling and, and.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm, uh, Friday I'm available.
Yeah.
So I think we can start a little bit on Friday and then dive into it next week.
Yeah. And I've already, I had a brief discussion with Roger Day about some of the things I thought were priorities and things to be on his radar. Um, including, I think payroll was one that I mentioned as a, as a priority top list. Um, and then also making sure departments get the administrative help that they need, uh, to keep ru- running smoothly. Um, as well as some other longer-term radar things without overwhelming. But that being said, I think, you know, each board member can have, you know, will begin the normal, uh, day-to-day. Conversations, um, and hopefully come to a contract, you know, agreement soon. But this gives us a little bit of wiggle room where you can get to work and smooth things out as much as possible.
So meanwhile, the, the other thing, I feel like it's the, you know, the gorilla in the corner. Um, I, like, so payroll and invoices, we know it. My other concern is, I feel like there's a lot of balls in the air that we're not even always aware of.
Yeah.
That just get them, right? And that's, they've been being done all this time, and we don't even know they're up there. And I'm afraid of what balls are gonna smash and hit the ground, because we're not even aware they're up there. And I don't, I don't even have a clear path to how we figure out what those things are.
I think the number one is just opening lines of communication with department heads, really, right?
Okay.
Because if there's something going on at the con con that requires something from the select board to the TA. You know, the con con agent will know or the chair of the con con, if there's something going on, you know, in the police department, the police chief should know, right? And so, that should hopefully eliminate the vast inventory mysteries, will also get you into the email, so.
Right.
You know, I, I understand what you're saying, and I think.
But your, your point's well taken, that hopefully most of them will come up, although things with the state maybe will or maybe won't.
Yeah, and, and let's.
But email should.
Email should clarify a lot of things.
Well, we have email, we need to get the key to the post office box for the town.
Yeah, and there may be.
Yeah, because I mean, you think about invoices, we're probably at the end of the month.
So, and we are on a bi-weekly invoice every other week.
Right.
I can't stand how bi-weekly can mean twice a week or every other week.
It's really annoying.
Um, but that being said, I mean, it's a good point, and I think, you know, the number one kind of takeaway is just opening lines of communication. So as issues arise, I know I'm trying to make myself available to the degree reasonable, um. Just to make sure everything run, runs smoothly, and look, we all know it's a transition, it's not gonna go off without a hitch. But let's try to identify them and handle them as effectively, make sure everyone gets the support that they, that they need. So, um, we'll start with basically, so then what does your next week look like? Is it mostly?
Next week's, uh, I think it's actually open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you wanna even, and one thing would be just get on that website, um, which, and just start kind of saying what times are in town halls that people know. We can have that discussion as part of the contract and down the road about exactly what that looks like, but right now, you're approved for up to forty hours. Not that every hour has to be a public available office hour. But. We have that conversation down the road about what exactly those are, but you could get something up if you could on the website for cl- for clarity and for public transparency.
The other thing is, you know, we need to write a, put an announcement out, and we have a plan now. Roger is, you know, he's good starting work, we're gonna get a contract on, but we should be telling the town. I don't know how to get access to like, send the minutes out for the select board meeting, you know, stuff like that. There's a way, you know, they sent an email out last week about.
The announcements? So, yeah.
I, I don't know how to do it.
I, I can do select work page up, so I posted this agenda clumsily, albeit, but.
Got it done.
Um, and then I double posted the finance committee agenda, so there's gonna be hiccups, but, um, you know, that's all gonna come with admin to the.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get through that, but how do we get the, you know?
How do we get the word out?
How do we get the word out? Okay, they, they got somewhat of a plan, you know, it's no longer a mystery.
So, so there's a couple of things, one is, you know, there's April Monterey news, which we got a few days left to put in and stuff for. Um, I think that the announcement on the website is a great one. I think getting our minutes approved in a timely manner as much as possible is helpful. I think Roger, one thing that unfortunately has been dropped is getting the recordings posted to YouTube. So that, if you could add that to the list, please, uh, that's not the most emergent, like payroll, but it's up there because it allows people to see what's going on. So, that could be, you know, at some point in the next couple of weeks, we try to get these meetings up there. And. Yeah, I mean, part of it's just gonna be playing by ear, I'm gonna talk to Seth, I'm gonna, you know, continue to work with Nancy, and we'll put Roger in touch with Nancy. Um, and I'll be in touch about the password, keys, cell phone, et cetera, as much as we don't already have, which, like I said, I'm not gonna make any statements about what we do or don't have, cause I frankly just don't know. Um, and then, you know, anything that comes up, especially while you're gone, you know, unless it requires select word approval, and we can wait till the next select word meeting. Or call an emergency one, uh, or even a regular one, you know, from Zoom. Um, if it doesn't require select word approval, I'll just try to handle that. With Roger, um, to the extent that we don't need to have the board weigh in on it, and if it does, we'll have the board weigh in on it. But something like, you know, the payroll, the treasurer needs to send the payroll to Harper's, that doesn't need board approval, right? So, um, we'll work it like that, I'll try to take point, if you think of anything, oh, this ball might be dropped, just please let Roger know. Um, and I think that's, covers most of it.
And at this point, communicating with Roger would basically mean be what, I guess, over the FC email because.
I would just say, let's do Roger at Monterey MA, and then as soon as we get him into admin at Monterey MA, we'll let you know. And I don't know if that's gonna be tomorrow or a few days from now, but for now, Roger is a good one because it's town-owned.
And it's town-owned and it already exists.
And it already exists. Eileen, did you have a hand up?
I did. Um, obviously you have some crisis situations and some things, you know, like you said, you must take care of. But one thing that I've always found very helpful in transitions is as you go through them, start with a handbook, so that, um, so that password. So I'm happy to help Roger, volunteer my time to help like with an office handbook, so we now have something that all the things that could be dropped, we know the procedure, we know where it is, all of those things. So, uh, I would say build it as you're doing it instead of waiting till after.
Yes, I think that's a good idea, so we'll do that as much as possible. We've made the motion that I thought was important, we also made an additional, uh, bonus motion of getting Nancy to help us a volunteer, which is fantastic. Thank you Nancy, and we're gonna sign the letter to Melissa, and I'm gonna make sure she gets paid. So, all that being said, um, the contract stuff will happen in executive session, and I think we wrapped that item. Any other questions? All right. So, the next, there's nothing gonna be really under item seven, town administrator items, but items six and eight are somewhat combined, right? Item six is just the annual town meeting warrant, which I drafted, I completely, I realized as soon as I sent it out that I forgot the fire truck. But.
You, you also, you've spoken about warrants on the fire truck, but there's a warrant on changing the word on the fire company. One of those thoughts.
Fire, oh, the fire truck on the.
It should be as a debt article, something like that.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, but there's, we need to change the wording on the, for the capital improvements, for the past three.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, I will send Chris an email and copy you on it, so you have it, he said he could work on the wording on that.
Okay, and then if anyone thinks of other things to add or notices mistakes, it was, I did it. Because I wanted to get something on paper and start working, it worked, I had a schedule a little bit in that sense. But I don't think there can be enough pre-planning. So.
Hi, how are you?
And then hopefully everyone can kind of get a sense for what the debt is. Additional payments are gonna be like. I don't know if that's legal, but.
What, the, which one, the free cash?
Where I put get additional debt payments in a table, I don't know if that's legal.
I know, but which, which one are you looking at? The free cash one or the warrant?
Twenty twenty-four ATM warrant. Oh, the free cash one is separate.
Yeah, that's why I thought that that was.
Spreadsheet that I couldn't put together all the different things for free cash, and what we can do in there, if we're willing to leave a little bit less than free cash, you can lower the years on one of the items.
Lower the years?
On that free cash spreadsheet.
Oh, okay.
You can put in how many years you want an item paid off on, and it will adjust your extra payment, other than the library, because. We're not set for a number of years, we're just set for a hundred thousand principal. So, all that being said, should we get into budget stuff? Um, I'm gonna grab some water.
Roger, how are you?
I'm good.
For other Roger, how are you? Another one was Rogers yesterday.
And to be clear, this Roger is still on the finance committee, that's right.
I guess so.
Cause he hasn't started working yet.
Who are we gonna try to get to run in like two months, because they're gonna have to get their name in there pretty soon.
That would be great.
You got somebody?
No.
Yeah.
I haven't been talking to anybody, I didn't know what we were gonna get. Eileen, do you have people to think about? For Mr. McDonald's.
On the finance committee, we're losing, we're losing somebody here, one-third of our staff.
We're losing our guy that made our capital matrix.
He's got a better offer.
We'll talk about it, I have some ideas, and anyone listening, I mean, we should also put out a call to public and put it out in the Monterey news. Go through that same appointment process that we had to go through for Roger and me.
It, it, it's possible that we wouldn't, given the timing of it, since the budget has nearly come to completion. Yeah, just, just suggest, do you wanna just write something up as finance committee chair suggesting that people, if people are interested, they should. Like, come talk to you guys about running.
Yeah, they could talk to either one of us, sure. Or both.
But if we had some thoughts about people that might be good to reach out to, to see if they would run, that might be even better. Not that I'm opposed to other folks, there might be people who will, we've reached through a, something in the news that wouldn't, we wouldn't think of, so.
Absolutely.
By the way, I, I thought that's a, I like it. I mean, you know.
So what you could do is you could.
So if you change.
That is rest will be able, let's say you wanna pay it off in four years, you're doing this year.
I didn't realize you'd done it for me, I like it.
Then if you go to free cash.
Oh, and it shares up here.
It will show you that instead of thirty-two thousand, I'll give twenty-six thousand.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I think we had issues.
All those years, I might give it to me.
Two years ago.
With what?
Probably, cause that's what the problem was with the.
Sixty percent up, your problem.
Because I probably, I done it for five, but the first two were free, so I had to pay.
Because they base it on the original amount instead of the outstanding.
Which you have to pay for the first two years if you don't want to.
Yeah.
That, yeah, but typically we try to, because the earlier you pay, the less interest you pay.
And I'm a little, I'm still niffed by that, if you paid her in the first two years, it doesn't matter. Well, is it a hundred percent? Because you know we've had debt service things that didn't yet come back a hundred percent.
I, I don't know. And I, I, I have to go over it again, I was saying. Do we need to consider whether we should be looking at another, um, banker or financial advisor to be advising us? It obviously has to be someone who's completely conversant in municipal process, but.
Talking hard to give another opinion.
Well, I, and that, I a hundred percent agree, and I think a lot of what we're dealing with now is just the debt service. Let's make sure that we're right about these things, not even what, that we're right, but what we've been told is accurate. And that whole formula doesn't even take into consideration if, if you wanna pay it off in five years, if you make a fifth payment the first year and a fifth payment the second year, the third year, they're gonna tell you to make a third of the principal, the whole principal payment. So I didn't take that into consideration, cause I think it's bogus, but it may be the law.
Right, exactly.
That's why I was thinking maybe you should.
Otherwise I have the chair that.
Cause if you can take those two, it's divided by five.
I mean, ultimately, what we'd have to do, should it be a, a legal requirement, would be to. Establish the years to allow for the payments we want.
In any case, it's good to make payments, and it's good to have a sense of, okay, we're paying off a quarter or a fifth of it, even if then you get to the third year, and you have to pay it off in only two years then.
Absolutely. Yeah. Well, the thing is, you can say the number of years that would allow you for the payments you wanted, even if you're advanced paying them.
I see. I see.
Right? So for example, I guess what, let me just finish explaining what I mean. So, for example, if we had wanted, like, I'm trying to think of what the example was, like, the tandem axle, right? We knew we were gonna, if we knew we wanted to pay, um, thirty-some odd, we could set twenty-five, right? As being the number we're shooting for, which we know would be, um, eight years out of two, you know, two hundred in eight years.
Yeah.
So we set it at eight years, knowing that we're gonna prepay, but the required payment then would only be twenty-five.
Yeah, but in that.
And we'll have it paid off in it before it's due, so what? If we're just going, we're just taking their formula and manipulating it so we get what we want, and if we pay off thirty-three instead of the required twenty-five, we're to the good. And if we pay off the, the, whatever that amount is in year one and year two, so we owe even less, we're still only required to pay the twenty-five, but we pay what we wanna pay. Pay it down, pay less interest, that way we're using the formula to our own benefit, because we're planning to make these payments.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
That's why I was suggesting add two years.
Right.
If you wanna pay.
Exactly.
For in five years, you just say seven, because the first two aren't gonna count in our formula.
Right.
The last five are.
Yeah.
So we're planning for the extra two.
I see, yeah. I see, and then another, if you wanna pay it off in seven, and you'd set for five, you pay it off in, you just pay it off very quickly. In any case, we're making good payments, I think it's all good stuff.
It's just a question of manip- using the system to accomplish our goal. We're using the system to accomplish our goal, which we think is, would actually be more beneficial than their system, so. Did you have something to add?
Yes, I just had a, a general comment, and that, we spent a lot of time on this, just in my presence here, and I don't mean today, but. It seems that the level of ambiguity is really what's not right. We represent the interests of the public, and typically when anybody in the public in our community goes for a loan, there's a truth in lending and all that kind of stuff, and you know exactly what's going for what. You got graphs or tables.
You got graphs or tables more than you can necessarily want or handle, but you know exactly what you're paying, you know, what the interest rate is. You know what it is per year, you know if you're forgiven, or if you have zero interest for a certain period of time. When that climate stuff starts to tick and if you haven't paid it off now, it's gonna be a higher percentage, you know everything. The town deserves, in my opinion, the town deserves to have that kind of clarity. And I would support the idea of getting another banker, or maybe we hear from one of our neighboring towns that they're happy with it and to say to that banker, hey, how do you handle this kind of stuff?
Well, I think that's, that's absolutely right. I think one thing, hopefully at this meeting, it may be a few weeks again before a joint meeting, so we can set off kinda like we did at the beginning, for people to tackle individual items. So we could set off a person or two to figure out more about debt service from the banker, from town council if needed, from the treasurer, and get under, get a better.
And we have more, we may have more pressing priorities right now, uh, in the next couple of weeks. But certainly I think as we're going forward, um, we should, certainly the select board and the finance committee should be really clear about how debts work.
Yep.
And we have to be able to represent that to the public as well. If somebody asks a question at the, at town meeting, well, it's a complicated thing.
Well. Nobody really understands what the banker says when he comes to answer questions.
We'll get clarity on it.
I'm happy, I'm happy to take it on. I'm happy to take it on, and I think we could use.
You wanna see, you can find us, i- if you're willing to make some calls to see if there's another municipal finance banker that other towns are happy with, that we might be able to get clearer answers from, that would be great.
Yeah, and they'll call the municipal finance, you know, committee thing at DLS and get their advice. Ask a lawyer, I love that guy.
The other thing is we were going to have David in, so we didn't even really, and we didn't, so we didn't really give him the chance to answer.
And I'm willing to, to have him in again.
I'm not saying it's going loud, but.
No, consider a second interview for future reference.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Um, Mickey.
So that was one thing that I have always had a problem with is, uh, the debt service. We just say you're paying over an amount. You had no idea what the starting amount was, what your current principal balance was. There was none of that information that I didn't have said.
On the warrant, you mean?
Yeah, and, and for even having it, not just on the warrant or, you know, a, a separate page that everybody gets. And so you, you know what each item is, you know, how much owed on the, the library loan and why the principal is this now? And, and you know, tandem axel, all this other stuff, you had, it's no clarity, it's no transparency at all. And the other thing is that, and I just advised Roger this, uh, there were some loans that, um, and they were, I think state loans that something that David had mentioned, that if we had gotten more than a year loan, we would not have been able to pay it down early.
State house loans.
Yeah, and so that was why we always went with the one-year loan, hoping that if we did get that money like we did last year, that we could put it and pay down. Like, but we couldn't have done that if we had had a state house loan.
Longer one. It, it is a strange system. There's not, like, most loans allow a repayment, and I don't, I guess they.
You just have to watch yourself.
Yeah, but it, it means you're betting on the, the, uh, interest rate, whereas you could probably get a better interest rate the other way with a longer running loan, but we don't have control over the rules.
Well, we're gonna get a little more clarity on what we are doing.
Right.
And what the rules are. And then I think the other thing that would frankly be ideal is a cover letter in front of the warrant and explaining various parts of the warrant, especially the budget. And ideally, it would say, this is why we're making, you know, we're paying twenty nine thousand dollars on the medical rescue vehicle. That's a fifth of the principal, and that's why, you know, that's what it is. So, um, ideally, we have a cover letter in front of the warrant explaining.
I mean, not only that, it's a fifth of the principal, but what the original price was, what the principal balance is now, you know.
Yeah.
And so people can, can actually see, you know, like you said, you get that when you, when you buy your car.
Car or house.
Yeah.
Yeah. The difficult thing, the debt we are taking on, we don't know any of those details because of the weird way this is all set off.
But at least with loans that are outstanding, we could.
Eileen?
Um, oh, you know, we did a, um, we're going to do the budget briefing, and I think we could do a sheet on this on the budget briefing. We can put it on the website, and I think, you know, in front of the warrant, I have to think about it, Justin, but we might want like a support package or something, you know, about, you know, like a, like a list of footnotes or something on the warrant instead of putting it up front. So have the warrant, if people want more information, they can come back, but not bring it to the front as an issue, you know, before it becomes an issue. Because I do think we wanna get the bottom of it, make sense of it, and it is kind of our policy to be paying these down. And that, that is something we'll really talk about in the finance committee budget briefing.
Okay, so we're, I think we're. Yeah, I think we're mostly on the same page. Eileen is gonna work to get a little more clarity, um, on these issues. And Eileen, maybe I'll work with you, um, on debt service in particular. The other thing is I sent out the, the most recent budget that I sent out, uh, this morning has the payments that I believe we've agreed to, as well as the additional principal payments. So if anyone has any disagreements or questions, just bring those to the front, just raise those. The total additional interest payments end up being ninety two.
The interest payments?
So the, uh, additional principal payment.
Additional principal, but you said, you said interest, so.
Free, free, free cash, it was, uh.
So the free cash allocated for additional was ninety two.
Oh, five.
Yeah.
And.
How much?
Twenty nine, ninety two thousand, two hundred and fifty nine and five cents.
But that's for all of the free cash allocated to Varia, it's not all for one thing.
The library in particular is twenty nine thousand and fifty dollars.
And there's the highway truck, medical rescue team, and.
And the tandem axle.
And the reasoning behind the non-library ones is to have the, the new highway international truck paid off in four years, including this year. So three years after this year, have the medical rescue vehicle paid off in five years, so four more years, and we don't even have it yet. And then have the tandem axle dump truck paid off in three years, including this year. Is the goal. The remaining principal balance to start on all of these, Mickey, since you asked the question. The library's at six hundred and seventy five thousand before this budget cycle. The tandem axel dump truck is at ninety eight thousand, two hundred and ninety nine.
It's ninety nine, ninety five, so three hundred.
And then the medical rescue vehicle, which we just signed for tonight, is a hundred and twenty nine thousand. And the highway truck that's an international is a hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty nine, and we just received it within this year. So within this past, within this fiscal year. So, that being said, uh, we'll move on to debt service if there's no other comments for now, and then we'll work to get clarity, please, you know, we will.
And that, I, again, I like that, the sheet you came up with, I think it's.
Um, thanks.
This year we just have a new chair, same sheet, and it starts to build some momentum.
Yeah. So, the, just to update the finance committee members, uh, I'm not sure if you were here earlier, but the select board spoke with the town clerk. He needs to work some more hours. The election has taken a toll on the office, especially on the regular day-to-day of the office. And he wants to also work that into next year's budget, or I, I think I might have asked, please work that into next year's budget. So I said, you know, usually we were accepting list or requests back in January and December, but it's his first time in office and he's, he's just learning about what it takes to do elections and do the regular work. And so I said that we'd be open to hearing a new number by April first. So he, that town clerk wages might increase, and I think it's valid because there's elections going on and we're just trying to get, come to an equilibrium where there's enough hours for that office. Two other lines that I pulled out, it just denotes our select board secretary and office assistant wages.
Are we, we're now on the regular budget?
The regular budget. I'm gonna look through everything that I know of, uh, which would be one twenty two select board secretary and one twenty office assistant wages. They total just about thirteen thousand, and, uh, I pulled them out because I think that Roger McDonald, you know, as coming into the role of town administrator, can maybe get a sense of what those might be used for, if we wanna combine them, rename them, or change the amounts. Obviously, you know, it's kinda like the town clerk, just starting it, things may change in six months or a year, but maybe after a few weeks even, you have a sense of, you know, we need, you know, the, the office assistant. We don't want a select board secretary because the TA or Nancy, I'm not volunteering Nancy, but maybe.
Something like that.
Maybe does the, does the minutes for select board, so we don't do that, but we want offices to different. Or maybe we just make it all vague and we just say office assistant, office help, or.
Town hall assistant.
Yeah, town hall administrative.
I think it should go.
I kind of always was thinking we were over complicating things by having all these.
I just wish to combine it into one, and over time he can help the problem.
Yep, okay, so.
Cause I did see something, wasn't the, um, the, uh, office assistant doing something for the clerk or for the assessor or something like that? I saw.
There's an assessor's clerk.
Yeah, I saw somewhere.
The office assistant was gonna be basically divided as many ways as possible without completely ruining the position.
So the office assistant doesn't know here is like, it's four hours for meeting and five for admin for planning.
We didn't have this known.
It's in, it's on the worksheet.
So, on the worksheet. And let's not get too tied up, but the point being, we'll combine the two lines to something about, you know, administrative assistance, and we can talk numbers to in a couple of weeks, right? And we might not have everything, have everything ironed out and predict the future, but if we know, you know, let's say there's a department that, you know, needs three hours a week for bills, and we know, okay, that we need three hours a week for bills, and let's make sure that's in the budget.
In addition to the budget, just from the process standpoint, it needs to be really clear who that person reports to, even if they're on loan, so to speak.
Yes.
To a committee or department, they still report to the TA if they're done.
Yeah.
And that, um, that's where the line authority goes, because you don't want that person having five plus.
Absolutely, and that's operational, we'll deal with, let's get the budget, you know, the budget side of it flushed out. So, well, after moving on from that, I have IT still flagged, just as a potential change.
I have one thing to note here on, uh, on account one thirty five for annual audit.
Yeah.
Um, you had eighteen thousand, five hundred.
Okay.
In the budget, right, supposed to be a thousand.
Correct.
Cause we're transferring seventeen fifty, and the, the overall budget's supposed to be eighteen five.
Correct. Thank you for catching that. That's exactly. So it's gonna be one thousand, and I think I already put in the placeholder, but I'm gonna make sure I have the place, an article, a warrant saying as much. So one thirty five is audit, it's gonna be a thousand, and make sure warrant article for transfer.
And going forward, it'll always be eighteen, it'll be eighteen five, and so it tells us it's nineteen five.
Yeah.
Or twenty five, or whatever.
It's not gonna go down.
It's not gonna, yeah, right, okay, so we're at one thirty five now.
It was just IT, and I don't, one fifty five is IT. I don't have any updates, but I'm just throwing out there as an asterisk.
So, um, the twenty, uh, the twenty seventy five, I talked to, uh, John Shannon.
Yeah.
And, uh, he gave me a number, I think, and that's kinda what I came back with at twenty seventy five. But that number is more of the transitional numbers on the high end, depending upon, we, we have a couple of options we can do. We can either keep things local or sort of not, and go out into the cloud. Going out into the cloud is actually less expensive. I don't really know what that means right now, cause I don't really know what's sort of happening. But, uh, the, the server that we have would have to be replaced, not, probably not this year, but next year, next fiscal year. So, that said.
Is it less expensive short-term, but more expensive long-term? Because you're paying monthly rental?
No, actually, it's, it's, um, it's kind of a weird question because it's, it's, the dollar value is what it is, and depending upon which direction you go, the dollars that are, that are in there right now will cover keeping it local. But if we decide, you know, if I go down in there and I say, hey, this is the direction we're gonna go, we don't need X, Y, and Z, it actually drops the price significantly.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, so that's why, but I'm not quite certain what that, you know, what, what the best direction is to go, and I didn't wanna make that decision.
What's the range, what's the range, what difference we're talking about, Roger?
Uh, probably about, it's probably if we, if we were to, to go remote, so server local, we would, we wouldn't need a, a lot of, um, we wouldn't need a lot of services that were part of that, or, um, some hardware we wouldn't need. It drops it by about twelve thousand dollars, I think. It puts it down below twenty.
And does it create any problems with departments that were relying on having that, at least short-term?
That's what my, that's what I was trying to determine.
So, I can weigh in a little bit.
Yeah, from what I can tell, um, people, uh, you know, there's a, a smaller group of people, who are, are actually mostly in town hall, that actually use the server. I think a percentage of those still save things local. My understanding is, is that the DPW, they don't even have connection to the server, so they're saving everything local. So there's some things that.
I can weigh in a little bit on the history, and which you may or may not know, but the tax collector and the assessor's office were running things off of the server, and as I understand it, that was essentially it. The assessor's office wants to move cloud-based.
They're contractually, they both said they wanted it.
Yeah, so they're in transition.
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons we've talked about ditching server. What I would suggest as a select board is, especially maybe just cause beyond my understanding, if you want to move forward, as long as you figure with the departments and meet their needs, let's do what meets their needs and is cost-effective. I don't any, understand anything about cloud or remote, so.
But determined to thirty.
Yeah.
No, I think, I, I think, I, I hear, I actually thought the exact same thing. Because, um, I, uh, I did have a conference talk through the budget process, and what, what Frank is saying is, sure, like the treasurers and, uh, accounting are all going off. The only, the only, um, the only piece of software that I'm aware of that actually has a local component is the town clerk's software. That LL data that keeps track of the, um, where they, they keep track of the, uh, the boards and committees. But I think there's a workaround for that. I do believe there is, that could, that could, if there was no local server, there are things that could, could take place without that.
I got a question, Roger. You, last week you mentioned talking to your inspector general about using John and how that.
Yes, and I, I, I just talked to them, I talked to John about that and what we said about the, um, the, uh, the process and the numbers that he gave me. And, uh, I'm gonna actually call Great Barrington, cause John suggested I call Great Barrington and ask them. But it's more of a project-by-project basis as opposed to one big project all at once.
Okay, so it'll be segmented.
Meaning what? So the, and the IT's office was essentially that.
The answers, the answer from the IT's office was that, um, you need to know more, you know, we need to really have numbers down to determine, uh, what the project is, and that project will determine, uh, whether or not you have to go out for multiple bids and that sort of.
But what you're saying, or, not, not what you're, or asking, are you saying if you take it in segments?
Yeah.
I don't wanna use that word, work it in, but you could do with this, we'll do this step, then two months from now we'll do this step.
Yes, like, yes, like the first step is, you know, we get John Shannon on a service, service.
Service agreement, so they comes in, checks all the test top.
Yep.
He can check the top desktops remotely, check that off. Okay, we're gonna remove the server now, we got tax collector and the, uh, board of assessors going to the cloud. Okay, we can do away with it.
Then the next, the next project will be us buying, um, us buying um, Office 365 licenses.
There's a way for buying that through the, you know, the office room, right?
Yeah, 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 so and then one last thing, so, so it says twenty seven five, but that, so it says twenty seven five in there. Uh, well, well, he, he has, uh, Justin has forty.
Okay.
Dollars that I got back from uh, John for the things that we need to do to move forward, yeah, was twenty seven five. But I, but that really just includes the things that we need to move forward, it doesn't include things that maybe needed now, cause I know now there's like fourteen to twelve thousand in there.
We, we put an additional ten thousand in the, during the.
Yeah, so, so in the, so the next fiscal year, I don't know of the, of the twelve thousand five hundred dollars that was in there for fiscal year twenty four, I don't know how much of that is needed for fiscal year twenty five. So, so twenty seventy five.
Start to work now and then finish it in.
Yes, right, you could, you could, yeah, the, the thing is, is again.
I think the most important, I want to apologize, is getting this service contract where you know, if someone's computer goes out, he has the ability to come in and do it, you don't, you don't have to go look for somebody, they don't break it.
And that's, that's my, I guess my, my, we can work to get things done this year with the ten thousand dollars, which kind of gives us a little buffer in the next fiscal year.
Okay.
And I think again, if we, if we go a certain direction, we're gonna end up dropping that, that annual.
So, we'll, we'll touch back on this in a couple of weeks, right, and we'll have a better picture. Just two things I want to say, one is whatever we do in fiscal year twenty four, we'll obviously pay for a fiscal year twenty four.
Yep.
But at the end of the year, that's gonna back, right?
Right.
And then the second thing is, I don't want funny in conference. Yeah, so then, the other thing is, um, as far as putting these out to bid, as I understand that we, it sounds like you get a service contract for under the limit and then let's say there's a special project that comes up, if it's also under the limit, there's two separate things. But obviously, we're not gonna divide, take one project that's thirty thousand and divide it into five thousand dollar parts. I just want to clarify that, I think that's what you're saying, I think that's what you were saying, but we're not taking one project and dividing it up. We're saying, okay, we're gonna have a service contract and then as projects come up, a whole project, if it's under the limit, we won't put it out there, but if, we're not gonna take one project and split it up.
No, they're definitive, they're, they're really defined, service contract with the PC. There's something we need right there.
Well, I was just gonna say, another piece of it is, we frankly don't know what all those needs are now, so we can't make a commitment to the whole thing, because we don't know what that need is, we're just trying to get from here to where we can define it.
Yeah, Eileen.
Eileen.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, at the risk of being a broken record, I'm gonna say the same thing, um, you know, about a lot of things. There are resources that can help us, the division of local services, I know we had experience with them a few years ago, but I have found them very good now and if we're very direct, they'll come in and kind of do a lay of the land for you, Roger, under your direction of what do we need, birds, what are the, you know, what are the standards? Because over, overall, we're really trying to move to less homegrown solutions and more solutions across departments, because that's where we're really seeing a lot of the budget swings and a lot of the things that we can't predict. So I think you can do that for IT, um, and that might be related, so we could talk more about that too, but I think there are resources we might not have to pay for, understand how other towns have done this and can help us get to the right place.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, moving on, I think the only other things I have noted, and if anyone has anything else that either they think is an error or they want to discuss more, please bring them up. But is the fire, department compensation, fire hall lease and then health insurance is interrelated?
Oh, there is, we know that in the, that health insurance, it was um, two additional family charges to the senior officers at the fire department. My understanding may have declined that.
Might as well.
And um, you know, I, I, I'm not sure what to say about the compensation at this point, I'm not sure what their feelings are or. You've, you've been working on it more, you know.
A little more, but like, I think that the last I knew, the thought was to um, to make a stipend for the officers, which would cover the two captains, the assistant chief and the chief. Um, but what those amounts are, that's not clear.
Unless they heard they didn't want that.
Pardon?
The last I heard, they didn't adjust it.
In what?
The stipends or the officers.
Um.
Last I heard.
As of when?
A few weeks, a couple of weeks back.
Yeah, this was more like last week.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
So it's gonna come back again?
Well, I think it's come back as a way to negotiate in between um, the health insurance and the regional housing stipend concept, um, trying to come up with a number that everyone can live with, um, but what those final numbers are unclear.
Do we know what they got, cause did they have stipends before? I thought they had stipends before.
Not recently.
Like a couple of years ago, they had stipends and then they got rid of the stipends so you can make adjustments to the uh, they shipped the staff.
I, that may have been true, I, I, I just feel like these guys are, the number of hours that they're working.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't just mean on fire calls.
Right.
Um, is getting to the point where I, I think we have to recognize that they're putting in enormous service and there's a point at which you just can't ask people to volunteer when they're, they're still like working, people supporting their families, it's just a level of commitment that I think is above the limit. I get it, I get it, like, so we're trying to, coming up with a number that recognizes that level of work and commitment um, at the same time as being like, doesn't drive up our budget too far, all at once, that's about it.
You definitely have taken that healthcare off the line, all right?
Yes.
Correct, I, I don't know if it's out of the number, but it's out, yes.
It's in the number, we haven't.
Is it still in the number and do we know?
That's how, I, I know.
You say it.
Yeah.
Because I haven't had to hand you the paper.
It's about.
No, but no, I mean, it's too murky, because if you're saying, if that medical pay is their pay, then they have to pay a federal estate tax on it.
And also, it's opening up a possible can of worms.
I agree with you. I'm not opposed to paying them, but I mean.
Exactly, so.
We're all on the same page, if you don't get my flow this year, what about the?
I, I sure you're saying.
I think you had put in the two, two plans for the fire department.
But I know how to do that, cause we have that other, but I.
But we can't do that.
I'm gonna figure out what's going on, yeah.
But that's gonna happen before it's finally.
Do you wanna try to work on that while I'm working on the lease?
I, I'm leaving Friday, but I could give it a shot.
Well, we're not gonna be back till after that.
Right.
Wednesday, I'm, I'm, I mean, you got two weeks.
I'll give it a shot, like, I feel like um.
But, but I think, I think you give it a shot, but then, you know, because he, they'll, we'll get input financial, just back to put it all in it. And then when the one major discuss how it's broken down.
Yeah, that's fair.
You know, that's all we can do, you know, we have.
Yeah, I agree.
That's the way. Yep.
Are, are you, do you have a mind taking that on, Justin?
Yeah, so just to be clear on who's doing what, Frank is still doing the lease, Susan's doing compensation. And then uh, and then I'm just, I'm just touching base on the health insurance, because we have had uh, a, a little bit of turnover, so we gotta figure out how that factors in and then are we just going back to basically running at normal operating? I don't know if the turnover in any way really affects the number, but we'll see if it does and then, and the cushion of a single plan?
We talked about it.
Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think, yeah, cushion of a single plan was, I think.
And we're, I, oh, we're on the, can't get to the right sheet, what's the number, cause I can tell you if it includes, is it still a forty-six now?
We're on nine fourteen, but I know how to get it back, I mean, I have the number from what it was just normal operating and a single plan. You know, we don't know if turnover could also affect it one way or another too, so.
Right, exactly, okay, I can help you with that, okay.
I mean, do you have a bird in your room or is that your chair?
Yes, it's my friend's bird, sorry.
Yeah, well, it did to me too, but then I thought, what, chair, I mean, we just held it a whole time.
Aren't they supposed to be a?
I'm in the jungle, it's the Amazon.
Okay.
Um, are there any budget lines that we missed, any questions in the public? Um, I will correct, health insurance, I will change office assistant and select work secretary to a single line called something like administrative assistance or administrative.
Support.
Support.
We're waiting to hear that.
The au- the audit?
Yeah, the audit is on my list and again, waiting to hear back from the town clerk on if there's gonna be a change there. We know who's divvied up for the fire and the health insurance and then debt service, Eileen and I are gonna nail that down as to what's going on, but assuming all of our assumptions were right about the law and the advice that we got, we're basically gonna stick to what we have.
Um, I have a question on the assessors line. I have a question on the assessors line, I don't know what line, the assessors line, they sent that email about, we asked them to talk about a raise, it was six hundred dollars, did we include that?
Yes, it's in there, so assessors clerk wages want line one forty-one has a seven percent increase of eight hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Okay, good, just wanted to make sure. Other thing that's very picky, but it'll just help us in the future and I know Roger has a lot of priorities. Um, that, Roger, if you can get from the accountant that changed policy about, um, you know, that certain lines, if we can make a policy that's right, you know what I'm talking about, I'm not saying English, that certain lines don't have to go back to the accountant or through the transfer, the old transfer appropriation, not the reserve claim request. There was a change made on that we talked about, but we never got a policy.
There was no change.
What?
There's, there's no change. Only reason you would ever have to go for a transfer between, uh, transferring between accounts, which needs to get approved by the finance committee and select work, would be if you're going from one line in the operating budget as it's proposed to town meeting to another. If you want to spend your internal subaccounts differently, as long as it's within one line on the town meeting budget, it's fine, as, as things move forward, we can determine what the town administrator and the accountant and the treasurer think is best, but legally, it does, it's insignificant because it can just be spent interchangeably, the subaccounts really don't matter.
Okay, no, that's what I see, that would be less overruns and more flexibility if we got anything wrong, right?
It's a little bit nitpicky and I think to the point where if it helps the TA and the accountant and the treasurer to do it one way, we'll set that as a policy, you know, whether you're changing those numbers as in real time or you're just saying at the end of the year, okay, this one we overspent three thousand, but we underspent this one three thousand. Uh, that's up for them, but let's not worry about it now, cause and there was no policy change, there was just a little confusion. Any other questions?
So, what number are we at, are we still at six one three?
Um, I can't, it's too early to say, because I haven't gone back and changed health insurance, but I'm at six eight five without dropping the health insurance back down. Um, I think.
But again, that's gonna be subject to changes in both the fire department lease and the fire department compensation.
Would I drop the health insurance back to roughly what it was, we're at five eight, that's a rough nu- rough percentage, so.
That might be why I ended at six one three, I put in some numbers, so yeah, all right, so we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, yeah, cause I have uh, I'm pretty close at five four.
Yeah, and I might be, you know, we'll get everything all figured out in this, in the law, sure. But, uh, if, you know, the select work does have a little bit more of an agenda on its own, if the finance committee wants to adjourn. Also, the finance committee, I understand you're gonna use mostly select work minutes, cause you're not meeting it all on your own, but at some point, you could get those, even if it's just a matter of changing the heading.
Yes, I will do that, um, I'm, I'm, I'll be back uh, by in ten days and I'm gonna, that's on my agenda to do when I get there.
Are you bringing back your birds?
If you didn't put the shit on the room when you're gonna open the menu.
Are we meeting on the twentieth, is the finance committee meeting on the twentieth?
I will have to learn how to post it, I had sent it, but I don't think it got posted, but yes, we're gonna meet on the twentieth. And uh, and so what do we do with Roger and, what do we do with Roger in that meeting? Does he meet with us as town administrator and not finance committee chair, do I need his resignation?
We're gonna work on it, we're gonna go after it.
Okay. Thank you.
By the way, the birds will go to sleep if you put them in the dark.
Yeah, we're waiting for the dark.
Make them dark, put a towel over them.
Yeah, I know, I really did one for, for last week.
I didn't do the regular.
Just, just like, the photographer wanted to get them done propped in, I'm like. I remember spending.
Are we adjourned for the finance committee?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I heard you. Yes, okay.
It was like, it's a negative, I don't know.
Yeah, it depends how you're gonna do it, the shot of the meeting or something.
I mean, I, I, you know, I think in a few other committees, I find that, I, so I say.
If everybody was, if everybody was on Zoom around, you could actually use uh, Zoom or GoToMeeting or some other application to create that, probably.
So, no, but even, okay, so I have a, I have a.
I use the transcript service a couple of times in college and everything.
And there's a couple of things going on, one is there, they make errors and need to be gone through with time through the home, and then the other thing is, we don't want to transfer. We want a couple of changes, but in some ways, if you commit yourself to not doing a transcription and not including every little detail, they become not that difficult. I think like when I did our minutes for our executive session, I just had a summary at the end, maybe they're not thorough, maybe you want to go back and add details. If you basically write down the motions and maybe of, of some major discussion points, we're gonna post it on YouTube, you know, we post on YouTube, yeah, so if people want the finer details of, of discussion.
Yeah, that's what I did.
I think the big tricky part comes into play when there is an important discussion and.
I'm just gonna summarize it.
And I think what's happened, what happened in the past when the team, having the select work secretary is that it becomes really impactful, if you don't know the politics of the situation and what, it's hard to identify what's important and what's not.
Yeah.
Um, and, and so like it's hard enough for you to know how to summarize things, but if, if you don't know, then you're trying to write better, you just, you know, what's important.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, you know, it's a lot easier when you're in the mix, even then, you don't, I don't want to insult someone's, you know, send them off a message.
Yeah.
All right.
All right. Okay, sure.
Are we going to executive session?
No, no.
So, there were a couple of things from the warrant, I, I wanted to.
Yeah, please, so one thing we skipped over, really, was the annual town meeting warrant. So, is, were there things you wanted to talk about there?
Yes, uh, well, I do have a note about debt service, but that was, did we ever meet you, Frank, but?
Yeah.
Are we, what are we doing with that?
What are we doing with that, is Eileen and I are gonna nail it now and I think that's gonna be a combination of maybe a meeting with you and Frank, maybe questions of treasure, maybe the town council, whatever really gets its answers that we're satisfied with, but obviously we didn't drill that into it.
Okay, the next one is on the recall petition.
Yeah.
Um, and section two, let me scroll.
Yeah.
Um, there's a part where.
Section one.
Pardon?
I just said section one.
Yes, section two, membership of this way for town.
Oh, wait, are we in recall or in like?
In the recall.
She said recall, that's the first one.
Section two, is it possible, uh, in section two, it says something about holding an election within seven days of my life. And I was like, wait, what, how would that even? And I was like, wait, what? How would that even work? Is that the second one? I think it is, right? On the warrant, put it down, what page on?
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying. Um, let's read this, the petition blank shall be addressed to select board. Let's go to the top of the paragraph.
I'm trying to find it, what page is it?
Oh, page four. Page four, okay. Thirty registered voters of the town may initiate a recall petition by filing the town clerk an affidavit containing the name of the officer sought to be recalled and a statement of the grounds for recall. The town clerk shall thereupon deliver to the voters making such affidavit sufficient number of copies of petition sheets. So this is, you don't even have a petition yet, you just barely begin the process. In blank demanding such recall and removal, each bearing the town clerk's signature and official seal. The petition blank shall be addressed to the select board dated and shall contain the names of all persons to whom they are issued, the name of the person to recall, the grounds for recall stated in the affidavit, and shall condemn the election of a successor to such office within seven days of receipt of the affidavit. The town clerk shall. So the whole point there, and we can have town council double check, but the whole point is that the, you submit thirty voters.
Right.
Saying, we just wanna begin the process. And within seven days after that initial submission by thirty voters, the town clerk needs to give you those real petitions where you will get fifteen percent of the registered voters of the town.
Okay, but to me, that reads as though.
It reads weird.
Yeah.
We'll double check that it's legal.
Okay.
This was the last time.
I know, but that doesn't, but you know, sometimes they make mistakes. Even if it was last time, maybe nobody caught it. But I'm just flagging that that reads weird. And if I was reading it, I would not understand it to be what supposedly it is saying. And I still don't. I can't believe I can't read that anymore.
Shall demand the election of a successor to such office within seven days of receipt of the affidavit.
It sounds like they have to be elected to office within seven days, which is just plain impossible.
But I, I think I do see what's going on here. No, so what, but what's going on here is, and shall demand the election of a successor to such office is part of that list that comes before that says it shall contain the name of and the grounds of and demanding the election of a successor. And all of that is part of these.
Affidavit?
The affidavit, that when it's received, that town clerk has seven days to deliver to the voters the petition blanks. That's what it's saying.
Okay, if you say so. I'm having trouble seeing how that's what it says.
It's bad punctuation or it's wrong, or there's something more to the story, but.
Right.
You give your thirty voters, say we wanna recall somebody.
It's about the clerk getting something from them and not us electing them within seven days, but.
Town clerk giving them petition blanks within seven days. We'll double check it, cuz it certainly is convoluted at best.
Right, it's very.
If not, wrong, so it may just be wrong.
So you're gonna check that with town council?
Yeah.
All right, uh, the next one I had is, is it too late to put putting, changing the con, com, the number of com, com?
It's not people.
On the war, I, I think we should do it, I think we should reduce it to five.
Okay. Yep. Um, we can just.
Because that changes the quorum and it makes things better, at least.
Well.
And it doesn't.
Because open meeting law says quorum is based on available seats, but apparently Wetlands Protection Act overrules it.
And says.
And says it's based on the number of people actually appointed. So quorum of seven is four. But if you have two people appointed, so in open meeting law terms, you have a, you don't have a quorum unless you have four people out of seven. But according to Wetlands Protection Act, you have a quorum as long as you have a majority of the people appointed. So if you have two people appointed and two people are there, that's a quorum. I'll send you the email. I thought I sent it to you, but it may have either gotten lost in the mixer, it might not.
I, I mean, you know, it's possible I haven't, like, there's something email.
So at the same time, let's just drop it to five because we have a, we have a hard enough time.
Those parts, yeah.
Um, I'll get that to you right now, why not?
Oh, okay. Okay, we're ready for next one?
Yeah.
So, um, on the Lake Garfield thing.
Yeah.
Um, somewhere in here, it talks about land belonging to Monterey.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm wondering, do, does the town actually? We don't own the beach technically, it belongs to the state, correct?
No, I think we own the beach.
I think they own the beach.
I think we own the beach, okay. I'm ninety-nine percent sure we own the beach. However, when the state built the dam, they got certain rights, like saying that there needs to be a publicly accessible boat ramp. So I think we still own it, they just do it that way. There is, so that we can double check, but I'm really pretty sure the town owns the beach. There is a weird discussion about who owns that triangle.
The, and the triangle, which is the part like in between the road.
Which is the boat and trailer parking, between Sylvan Road, Tannion Road. That, but is, do you know where?
But the reason I was really asking is if the town owns land on the lake, would the town therefore be in the tax district?
We can double check, but I don't, I'm almost certain it, we will. Well, maybe we will.
I don't, do, do we have a voting, like what, what happens?
Well, I'm just trying to think of the closest thing I can think is we use water company, water, and we pay the water company. However, this is a like governmental entity, the tax district. So we don't pay property taxes on our properties. They just take, okay, we don't pay property taxes on our properties even though they're assessed. So like the school property, this property, the highway bridge, we don't pay property tax on them. However, they are assessed. Would one in a tax district, would we pay property tax on it? We can ask.
I mean, it would be ironic if.
I mean, it would still be like a thousand dollars instead of fifty.
Of, of course.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not actually even saying that it's a bad thing, I just wanna know what it actually is.
Yes.
Um.
So do we pay property tax for the?
And I was also wondering how it would affect the, uh, town management of the beach. Like, it wouldn't, it shouldn't affect that at all because the.
I don't have the beach.
The town, right, the town owns the beach, but the, the tax district wouldn't affect how that was handled. Um, I think the answer to my other question was, is the working group fully on board and prepared to back it is yes.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know that we'd ask, but I, I would, I think I might have written in my good note, I don't know, but I, I feel like it would be great for someone from the working group to write something for tomorrow news.
Yeah.
Just, I think the more people know about what's coming down the pipe and why it's important and have a little more background than anybody necessarily has time to stand up and say at town meeting, the better.
Yeah.
I know I thought about it, but I don't know if I actually emailed him about it.
Oh, about Monterey News?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll see to what, I'll probably try to get some stuff in there about town meeting. That maybe will, oh, no, you don't.
Yeah, I did actually email him suggesting he write something for it, or someone from the working group write something for it. I, he didn't answer that part, but that's fine. Um, that was all I had about the warrant.
Okay, and if there's other articles, I mean, it's not too late. Uh, but I wouldn't go overboard. I wouldn't, uh, it's getting too late in a couple weeks here.
Yeah.
If there's one last thing we wanna add, I have, you need to add the fire truck for debt. I'm gonna add a placeholder at least about the, the warrants.
Yeah.
And then we'll go from there. The con, com, changing to five seats.
Placehold for what?
Also, uh, warrants converting them to lease improvement.
Um, right, 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 right.
So at least I'll get a placeholder so we know we gotta do something. Some of the words I did were homemade, so we'll run it by town council and accountant and whatnot, we will do that. I think if we follow schedule, which we don't necessarily have to, but if we follow the schedule and don't meet again until April second, it was, um, I'll probably have, try to have this, this all squared away by the time we come back. Um, in terms of town council, accountant, treasurer.
Right, that makes sense, cuz that's three weeks and I'm, we're both done next week and you're done the week after, so that's why.
I get back March thirty-fourth.
If we need to meet, we'll meet.
Yeah.
Hundred percent, but if not, and even if you do.
We need to meet just to keep Roger, what's he doing, what's he need help, I just give that general information.
You think we do need to meet?
On the second?
Yes, we'll be in the second.
Yeah.
But, you know, one thing that's gonna happen between now and then is because we're not meeting every week, I will try to get the warrant as nice as possible for when we do meet.
Okay, I, I'll write by tomorrow, or Chris tomorrow morning about the wording of the warrant, so you have it.
Yeah. Yeah, for, for what?
The wording of that warrant for changing the wording for lease improvement that month.
Okay. You, I'm sorry, Chris, meaning, meaning the lawyer, not Chris. We got a lot of Chrises, so you got.
A lot of Rogers too.
I know, so it's just important that it's clear which, which one you're talking about.
Um, let's see.
What else we got?
So as far as agenda, are we ready to do some bit of minutes? Uh, we can do the executive, if we're ready to do the executive session minutes, it would be in, in executive session.
Well, uh, do you wanna go in, in and out of executive session? Or so why don't we do anything that's not executive, like that?
I'm getting it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The twenty-seventh, I looked at what you sent out, I have no changes, but I got two of them.
I had a few little ones.
All right, yeah, let's do twenty-seventh and then, then, you know, and all the other meetings were last week.
Right.
So we're in a good place.
Tell me when you're.
Yep.
Um, the Zimmerman name is not right, it's Jeff.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, uh, in number three, Justin reported that he met with Michael Trina, Lake Garfield Working Group last night, and they, not he.
Yeah.
Uh, so in number four, half way down, she had requested the board provide dates and times for three one-hour blocks, there was a, it was an apostrophe S.
Three one-hour blocks and wrote.
There was an apostrophe S, oh, here it is, applicants.
I have with the plan to propose no more than three candidates as finalists for interview by the select board.
And I, I think I was only fixing the apostrophe S at the end, applicants. Don Cooper requested the final applicants, and it should be applicants plural with an apostrophe S.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's funny how that works.
I can't, I can't actually.
Well, it's funny how it works out like that.
I know. Uh, my next one is on the next page, item seven B.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Frank reported the town administrator had seven K in the budget.
Yeah.
Um, and then the last line, it was agreed to lower this line.
I got that.
Uh, going down to E, just, uh, I only spoke with Michael Banner, he thinks there may be some tweet issues he might need to address, and I didn't suggest it, he said that. O, grant writers. We have one very zealous grant writer, I wrote, who has written many successful grants for the town.
One who has written.
Many successful grants for the town. And then it says, and Susan suggested that it might be worth raising that line. Okay, so I just added, and Susan.
Yeah.
And then in the next sentence, Frank countered with twenty-five hundred comma, and all agreed this was a good investment. Uh, down in T.
Yeah.
I would capital, Justin asked if Melissa would speak to Jim to just said speak to Z.
Speak to.
Jim to Z. If he would be irritable to level one capital.
It's really, we're renaming it road maintenance, which is more accurate.
Okay.
So that's just.
Fun road maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
It, it was always confusing that it was with capital.
Okay, that's all I got.
All right.
What else, what did you change, but then I didn't?
Um, Frank to Jeff. Matt, or I changed Matt to spoke cuz I didn't meet with Michael, I just spoke with him.
Okay.
And then, uh.
The stars. Yep, okay.
And then mine, or Jamie, maybe even one made by you. Justin, I deleted Justin, not any updates, and Justin, I get more information on this, I even will have to come back to it next week.
Okay.
Lower, change to less expensive. You made that change, this expense, adding expense, that we just did with you. I changed some wording about what, about the ambulance service, did I send email council guard might happen, or try to negotiate a lower assessment in the ambulance.
Okay, that worked?
Added a document.
Okay.
All right, motion approved, the February twenty-seventh minutes has amended.
I'll second.
Uh, is there any discussion, call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, it's unanimous approval, so those are approved. Uh, and we can discuss if we wanna do the.
Do you wanna do the second? I'm good to go on.
Do you have edits to them?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Do we wanna do the sixth?
I, I don't have the sixth with me, but I looked at it on my computer, but.
Do you want me to just set, send you the ones I got? Or what do you wanna do?
What, do you feel good with them?
I, I looked at them briefly, I mean, go through them, you highlight what it was. I, I just didn't, I didn't get to it.
Okay, should we wanna just do, come back to it?
We can bump them then.
Okay, please bump them. Um, it was just last, it wasn't even a week ago. And then if we do wanna discuss the executive session minutes, I would just recommend that we say we're gonna do it, when we're going to do executive session, include that as part of the motion.
Yep.
Um, we've been advised before that we don't really need, you don't need to post going into executive session to approve executive session minutes. And you can go and do executive session for the sole purpose of approving executive session minutes.
But if we're doing it anyway, we're not.
Yeah. Um, is there any other unanticipated business or comments or questions from the public? Okay, I'm going to make a motion that the select board enter executive session under purpose two for the purpose of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-unit personnel, the town administrator, um, and to approve the March seventh, twenty twenty-four executive session minutes.
I'll second.
And just to add to the motion, um, to not come back into open meeting after the executive session.
I agree.
All right, we have a second. Is there any other discussion? We'll call a vote, and we'll do this by roll call, so Susan.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
And Justin will vote yes, so that's a unanimous vote. Um, we're entering executive session at seven thirty-nine PM, and we are not coming back to open meeting.